Ladies and gentlemen, it's 6:00 PM. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't know. This meeting is officially called to order. Roll call, please.
Trustee Eves.
Present.
Trustee Lilly.
Present.
Trustee Dunlap.
Present.
Trustee Blakie.
Present.
Trustee Clark.
Present.
Trustee Marshall.
Present.
Is there anyone here tonight that is interested in addressing the board? If so, you may come forward now. You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? All right. Is there a motion to approve minutes dated July 23rd, 2024? Motion by Clark.
Supported.
Supported by Eves. Roll call.
Eves.
Yes.
Lilly.
Yes.
Dunlap.
Yes.
Blakie.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
That motion carries. We'll now move on to our standing committee reports, beginning with Public Works.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everybody. I would like to make a motion to waive competitive bidding and accept August 1st, 2024 service estimate from McCane Industries, Inc., regarding village excavator equipment.
There's a motion. Is it supported?
Supported.
Motion by Dunlap, supported by Lilly. Attorney Boyle.
Yes, good evening, everyone. This comes to you on a recommendation from Public Works for some maintenance and repair work on its excavation equipment. McCane Services, Inc. is the entity that has serviced the equipment since it was acquired by the village and has extensive knowledge of how the equipment works. And given the need for the repairs and the timing of the repairs, that would be the basis for the waiver of the competitive bidding.
Roll call.
Eves.
Yes.
Lilly.
Yes.
Dunlap.
Yes.
Blakie.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
That motion carries. Is there anything else? Thank you. Economic Development, trustee Blakie.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Just have one thing under economic development, and that is the Chamber of Commerce is seeking some passionate board members and ambassadors for the upcoming year to help shape our community's future and promote local businesses. If anyone here or anyone online is interested, please contact Dorita Tyler. Her number is 708-845-7023. That's all I have for economic development. Can I move on to community affairs?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I have a number of things, but I'll be quick in community affairs. We just recently had our 2024 Linwood Fest, and it was by far the biggest and the largest fest that we've had in the history, I believe, of the village of Linwood. I have some personal thank yous for the individual. I was responsible for the kids' zone, and I have some personal thank yous for the individuals that helped me. I cannot say enough for Sam Garcia and his team of Public Works. They assisted me not only in the planning stages, but also preparing the day before, the day of, and breaking down. So, Sam, I really appreciate your help. I really appreciate your leadership, how you led the team to assist not only with the kids' zone, but throughout the entire park. So, thank you very much. Let's give Sam a great big round of applause, please.
Yes, Sam. Yes, Sam.
I also want to thank Chief Thomas and the entire Police Department. This was the first time, at least in my experience, that the chief has assigned a police officer to the kids' zone right at the entrance to the kids' zone for the entire time. They took shifts periodically throughout the course of the day. I was very appreciative of that. We did not have any problems, but if we did have, if we had had a problem, there was an officer there that was stationed the entire time to assist us. And so, chief, I appreciate you and your officers. Give them a great big round of applause, please. And finally, I want to appreciate in particular two of my colleagues. One is Chief Thomas, and the other one is trustee Marshall. They offered their children as volunteers to help in the kids' zone, and I was so appreciative of them because they brought their heart to this entire endeavor. They stayed there for four hours. They were at different stations. They didn't complain about anything, and it's excellent when you see young children giving up their time and giving up their talent to assist in a voluntary manner. And so, I appreciate all of them, and I have some special gift cards for them. This is for Deasia James, who is the daughter of trustee Marshall. I have one for Jelisse Thomas, for Emily Thomas, Peyton Thomas, and Alicia Thomas. If you all are here, can you come forward real quick? I thought that they were here. I thought it was here. Yes. To see these young people, they assisted us throughout the entire kids' zone. Give them a great big round of applause. The last thing I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much, ladies. The last thing I have, Madam Mayor, is the announcement of our October 5th, Oktoberfest. We are looking for sponsors. That's going to be on October 5th in Liberty Park. We're looking for sponsors for that particular event. Sponsorship, silver level sponsorship starts at $250, and there's also a bronze level sponsorship. The same attendance that we experienced during the Linwood Fest, we would like to experience it at the Oktoberfest as well. Again, that date is October 5th, 2024, in Liberty Memorial Park. Thank you very much. That concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Blakie. Planning and zoning, trustee Lilly.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Madam Mayor, I have nothing for planning and zoning. May I move on to ordinances and resolutions?
Yes.
I'm making a motion on a second read action taken, resolution number 24-18. This is a resolution authorizing the village president to execute a contract with Midwestern Electric LLC.
Yes. Motion by Lilly, supported by Dunlap. Attorney Boyle.
Yes, this agreement was, or resolution was approved at first reading at the July meeting. You'll recall, this is for work on the village's existing transformer and CT cabinet. It has been vetted out price quote wise by Sam and the folks in Public Works, and it comes to you tonight for final approval.
Thank you. Roll call.
Eves.
Yes.
Lilly.
Yes.
Dunlap.
Yes.
Blakie.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
That motion carries.
All right. My next item, I'm making a motion to waive the first read and move to a second read action taken to adopt resolution number 24-19. This is a resolution approving and adopting the collective bargaining agreement between the Illinois Fraternal Order of Police and the village of Linwood.
Motion by Lilly, supported by Clark. Attorney Boyle.
Yes, this is a four-year bargaining agreement, effective retroactive to May 1st of this year. It adjusts wages and salaries to make the village more competitive in terms of hiring new officers into the department and retaining the offers that you currently have, as well as some agreeable changes on the language of the agreement. So, it's coming to you with a waiver of first and second reading in order to do immediate adoption and not have any, kind of minimize issues on retro pay and things like that.
Thank you. Roll call.
Eves.
Yes.
Lilly.
Yes.
Dunlap.
Yes.
Blakie.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
That motion carries to my men and women in blue. I hope you are pleased with your new contract, and I hope you believe that the village of Linwood did right by you. Thank you for your service.
This concludes my report, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Health and Wellness, trustee Clark.
Okay, so for health and wellness, the month of, every month holds a lot of awareness and attention to many causes. I'm just going to break it down because our time is short. This is National Immunization Awareness Month. RSV is on the rise. They have an immunization for that. Flu and pneumonia is also on the rise. For those who are over 60 and have comorbidities, please see your doctor about staying healthy through this cold and flu season. It's Child Eye Health and Safety Month, National Eye exam Month, Black Business Awareness Month, National World Cancer Support Month, National Water Quality Month, National Wellness Month. And one other thing that's special in this month is our mayor has a birthday this month, as well as my sister. So, the last thing I'm going to say is, on September 14th, we're going to have the Glow in the Dark Bike Ride. It's a nice, healthy event. So, if you want to sign up to get free low gear beforehand, and email me at rclark@villageoflinwood.net. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Finance, trustee Eves.
Good evening, everyone. I have a motion to approve bill payment memo 1503. Total amount is $376,131.93, which includes payroll for the period of July 7th, 2024 through July 20th, 2024, in a total amount of $193,458.07.
There's a motion. Motion by Eves, supported by Clark. Roll call.
Eves.
Yes.
Lilly.
Yes.
Dunlap.
Yes.
Blakie.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
That motion carries.
Madam Mayor, I also have a motion to approve bill payment memo 1504. Total cash disbursement was $483,223.16, which includes payroll for the period of July 21st through August 3rd, 2024, in a total amount of $171,028.61.
Motion by Eves, supported by Clark. Roll call.
Eves.
Yes.
Lilly.
Yes.
Dunlap.
Yes.
Blakie.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
That motion carries.
And my final bill payment memo, motion to approve bill payment memos 1505. Total cash disbursement was $570,568.91, which include payroll for the period of August 4th, 2024 through August 17th, 2024, in a total amount of $178,137.65.
Motion by Eves, supported by Clark. Roll call.
Eves.
Yes.
Lilly.
Yes.
Dunlap.
Yes.
Blakie.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
That motion carries.
Madam Mayor, I would also like to thank everyone that participated in the fundraisers and gave donations to support the Linwood Education Scholarship. The village was able to not only provide scholarships to our high school graduating seniors, but for the first time, we also provided scholarships for our returning undergrad students. Scholarship amount totaled $9,500. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Public Safety, trustee Marshall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to flip here a little bit. I'll make a motion for the approval to uphold the termination of probationary officer Darren Marshall.
There's a motion. Is it supported?
Supported.
Motion by Marshall, supported by Eves. Roll call.
Eves.
Yes.
Lilly.
Yes.
Dunlap.
Yes.
Blakie.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
That motion carries.
Just for the record, no relation to this Marshall. The second one is, wow. Jesse Hernandez. You know, being a trustee and being over public safety, I take it personal. From the day I stepped into this office, the fire department, the police department became my family. It's hardly ever time that I see these gentlemen and ladies on the street. I don't shake a hand, say something to them, do something to them. I brag on our police department here in Linwood. I brag on them all the time because they get a chance to do true police work here in the village of Linwood. And so, I take pride in bragging on them, but Jesse Hernandez is one of the people that really makes me brag and speak out about our officers here in the village of Linwood. And so, I was talking to the mayor a few weeks ago when we knew we were going to be recognizing Jesse tonight, and we kind of came up with some things that we wanted to do. A few of my items didn't come in, but the most important item did come in. And so, I want to present you with that item, and it made me very proud to find this out. I don't hear, I don't need to hear nothing from the audience. You are a Cubs fan. When y'all get out the cellar, y'all can tell me about the Sox. You're my man. So, Jesse, on behalf of the trustees and the board, we're going to present you with your vote.
194.
Y'all get out the cellar, talk to him. I know you're here, okay. It's going to be some years to come. Thank you, Jesse. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yes.
Got some other items coming. When we get those items down, make sure you get them. That's all I have now.
Thank you. We'll now move on to our department reports, beginning with Fire. Chief Austin.
Statistic of the fire department has left one fire call, 118 A.M. calls, one fire call, two runners falling, five accidents, two accidents, five gas leaks, five CO2 alarms, three service calls, 12 city ambulance calls, two change of orders, mutual aid station coverage calls, two calls canceled routes, fire alarm calls, one special type of call is wanted to be announced, 167 calls to the fire department. And then, I just have, fire department will be having an open house on October 12th at the firehouse from 10:00 A.M. to 2:00 P.M. Fire will be coming out.
Thank you. Public Works Director Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just my productivity report. One fire hydrant repaired, one water main break repaired, six water service lines repaired, one sanitary line repaired, 620 vacant lots repaired, or cut, should I say? And also, I'm going to be sending out a friendly reminder to 20 residents about our lead and copper sample that we have to do this year again, so they'll be getting it the first week of September. That ends my report.
Thank you. Village Engineer, Mrs. McPherson.
Good evening. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Finance, Mrs. Swidoret.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report tonight.
Thank you. Building Department, Ms. Hurley.
Yes, Madam Mayor. The number of permits issued between the time July 24th, 2024, to August 27th, 2024, 77 permits at a total of $66,885. I have no further information. If you have any additional questions, call us at 708-758-6101, option 4. That is my report.
Thank you. Attorney Boyle.
No report.
Madam Clark.
Yes, I wanted to report a couple things. The first is that our vehicle stickers, as of August 1st, are now $90, so I hope you received your vehicle sticker prior to August 1st. And the second thing I want to report, I wanted to recognize a few of our neighbors. I received an email on August 8th, and it reads as follows. "In this day of finger-pointing, mismanagement, racial distrust, I wish to make all aware of something great that happened in the village today. Around 8:30 A.M., I got up to take the trash out to the street and found five strangers mowing my lawn and cutting bushes. As some of you may know, I hurt myself more than a year ago and cracked several ribs two weeks ago. To say my yard on a corner lot had fallen into disrepair would be an understatement. I was speechless, and I'm not known for being quiet. One man I found out was a neighbor who stopped to help, along with his wife, when I fell getting the mail. Another was a longtime friend from Little League who had been providing high-quality flags for my flagpole. These men spent over five years of their time, I'm sorry, five hours of their time and tools to not only cut my grass, but remove trees and bushes. Barry Murdock, Trivious Hardeman, Chris Olson, all from the 201st Block of Dolphin, 20100 Block of Dolphin, I'm sorry, Minor Thomas of 19900 Block of Cypress, and James Macklin of the 2900 Block of 200th Place are truly angels in my eyes. Not for pay or public recognition, these five gentlemen gave of their time and energy because they saw a neighbor in need and wanted to make our community a better place to live. They renewed my faith in humanity. After over 50 years in the fire service, 35 of which were in Linwood, I have never seen such kindness from citizens regardless of race. It truly makes me proud to live in Linwood. Thank you, gentlemen, for that is what you truly are." John Cobb. I would like to ask if Mr. Barry Murdock, Chris Olson, Minor Thomas, or James Macklin is in the place? Please come forward.
Unfortunately, tragedy has happened, and one of the persons that I mentioned earlier, Trivious Hardeman, unfortunately passed away before I was able to give this to him. So, his son is here, but I would like to ask for everyone to just give us a moment of silence, if you'd like to. Thank you very much. On his behalf, on his son's behalf, give yourself a moment of silence.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now move on to our Police Department. I believe I'm going to ask Pastor France to come forward and offer a prayer before Chief Thomas presents.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and all the trustees. I wanted to offer to Trivious Hardeman's son, we have walked women and sold children that are going to be guessed at our church on September 8th. We argue, son, the tickets are $25, and I'm paying for yours. Before I pray, I did want to say something about trusty Curtis Marshall. And when you hear him talk about his passion, I know personally, Mr. Mc, you may or may not know, that we sponsor a program, a leadership development program called the FES, which keeps the building empowering, serving, and doing it together for young people, middle age people. This man, out of his own pocket, sponsored and paid for, without any special recognition, for all the transportation, he took 15 to 20 kids to the tall university. These are middle-aged kids, middle-school kids, that are learning about leadership before they even get to high school. And he enjoyed this vision so much, he said, Pastor France, I'll pay for it. Could we put our hands together for that kind of dedication? You didn't ask for that, but we appreciate it so much. Let's pray. And before I pray, it's a privilege to be the chaplain of the Fire and Police Department, especially when you know personally the men like Officer Mike Johnson, and certainly Commander Jesse Hernandez, who I've known now for years. I've met his wife, I've met his two great youngsters, your boys. So, it's a tough one for me, too, to see you transition to another role that we're praying for. Let's go to the Lord. Father, we thank you so much for the absolute greatness of service. In fact, you said, if you want to be great among the people, be a servant. These two men embodying service. We thank you for the privilege of lifting them up, and most importantly, following the hand of God and mercy upon their lives. Continue to bless their children, bless their spouses. Continue to surround them with their care and concern. We honor you forevermore, being consistent in this state.
Chief Thomas.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. My stats, since our last meeting, July 23rd, be 430 traffic stops, 27 arrests, 26 guns recovered, 986 building checks, 27 domestic incidents, and 186 ordinance violations, a total of 2,340 calls for service. The only announcement is, we want to remind the parents of our village to keep in mind, September 28th, from 9:00 A.M. to 11:00 A.M., we will be having our annual cops and barbers event at Liberty Park. We encourage you to bring your kids out. We have free fish and poles, free baits, and they'll be able to win prizes. That ends my report, Madam Mayor. Can I move on to the presentation portion? My first presentation is to Officer Michael Johnson. Today, this evening, we'll gather to honor and recognize the extraordinary bravery of Michael Johnson, who was shown unparalleled courage in the line of duty. On June 29th, while assisting the county sheriff department in the Hunter Side City, the board hikes, Officer Michael Johnson put his life on the line to protect others. Despite the danger, he remained steadfast and committed to service, even while taking fire and being struck in the right shoulder. Officer Johnson's actions that day reflects the very essence of what it means to be a law enforcement officer, to stand strong in the face of danger, to protect our community from out of the cause. He put the safeties of others before his own. His courage and dedication exemplifies the highest standards of our profession, and for that, he's receiving a Purple Heart. Officer Johnson, your bravery and sacrifice are not going to lose. Your actions on that day is a testament of your character, and your training, and your unwavering commitment to duty. We are proud to have you as a member of the Linwood Police Department. We are grateful for your service. Congratulations, and you're well-deserved honors, and thank you again for your courage. Please stay fortunate.
Officer Johnson, President Reagan said, "Evil is powerless if the good are unframed." Officer Johnson, you are... Officer Johnson, you are most certainly unafraid. You represent all that is good in policing. Many will never understand what you must have been thinking that night. Many will never know your willingness to sacrifice your life for the community that you didn't even work for. From the moment I received that call at four AM until the moment we pulled up to that hospital, I was quietly praying, not just for your physical well-being, but your mental well-being. I will never forget the relief that I felt when I walked into that hospital room and saw that you were going to be okay. I also will never forget how you tried to convince everyone that you were coming back to work that afternoon. I'm not sure if you were delirious or committed to your profession, but I like to think it's because of your commitment to police. Police see the worst in people. Through it all, officers must be calm, brave, helpful, and above all, hopeful they can make a difference. Officer Johnson, you made a difference that night, and the Village of Lynnwood will be eternally grateful for your heroic efforts. But most importantly, we are eternally grateful that you are still here, mighty and good father. Congratulations.
I guess what I was thinking, more so than anything, was make sure nobody else got hurt. Appreciate the county sheriff department, every family out there, where the situation that was happening at the moment. Definitely my team, my commanders, my sergeant, my chief, you guys, I like you guys. I love Lynnwood, and I love the fact that I'm here, and I appreciate everything that you do and everything that you do for the trustees. I've talked to several of you guys multiple times, my sweetheart there. Fire, we get better because we've got a relationship. I still like you guys. The best friends, we've had so many conversations, family friends, my mom, my lovely fiance, pensions, Brian Smith, mentors, I have a lot of mentors here. It's crazy. That's definitely one of the gentlemen over there. I'm tired of Officer Perry. I don't know, I appreciate the, the, let me out, the village members itself, the people living here. I appreciate the things that you do and how you guys actually look out for us as well. That's great.
So we also here to honor another man. Again, tonight we gather to honor a man who has dedicated over two decades of his life serving, protecting our community with unwavering commitment and integrity. Commander Jesse Hernandez is leaving with twenty-one years of service, extinguishing service. Lethal behind his legacy, though resonating in our department years ago. Throughout his career, Commander Hernandez exemplified what it means to be a true public servant. He's held various ranks, each time demonstrating his versatility and expertise. From his meticulous work as an evidence technician to a sharp instance as a detective, he's always been the forefront of our effort to uphold justice. His assignment to the Major of Crime Task Force, to the FBI, a testament to the trust and the confidence placed in him by his peers and supervisors. These roles require not only skill, but also the kind of leadership that Commander Hernandez embodies so naturally. He's also been a guiding force to our department, mentoring our young officers, and leading by example. Commander Hernandez's leadership extends beyond his title, his assignments. In the way that he approaches every challenge, the determination, in the way that he treats every colleague with respect, he's the way, he's the way he remains steadfast in his commitment to our safeties and his community. As we bid farewell to Commander Hernandez, we so put deep sincere gratitude and admiration his contributions to our department and the community of Lynnwood is imaginable. And while we will miss his presence on our force, his impact will continue to guide us. Commander Hernandez, on behalf of the Lynnwood Police Department, the community who served so diligently, we thank you, we wish you all the best wishes and well wishes on your new journey, and may you enjoy the next chapter of your life so richly as you have served in this chapter. Commander Weinberg, please call all uniformed personnel and sworn personnel. All uniformed and sworn personnel, attention! Commander Hernandez, with you, your wife, your children, community members, therefore, this day, this moment, we salute you, your family, and your career. Freeze that, arms! Order, arms!
First of all, this is okay. Thank you everyone for coming. Thank you everybody who's super supportive of the village. You're so great. I really appreciate everyone who came out here. I know everyone is busy with others. There's so many faces here I haven't seen in years. This is difficult, right? It's difficult because I don't want to leave. I mean, I'm blessed, this place is incredible. Chief Thomas has been so good to me, past few years, been here. The mayor is incredible to me. All the trustees are always so great to me. All my fellow officers are so supportive of me. Everyone across the hall. I have nothing to say about this place, that's why I'm making this so hard to leave. I'm just incredibly blessed to be able to, it seems like God's just putting people in our lives. Pastor France, I met him years ago. He's paroled me in that painting several times. He's very grateful for that. Actually, I'm a photographer. God puts people in their lives, right? He's had many conversations, he's given me some great advice. About my health, that's why I'm leaving. You know, some people come to work and they call it work, right? This isn't work. I'm so blessed, I come here, it's like a safe home. I've been doing it for so long, in the same building. I keep me, you incredible people, all of our new hires are incredible. I wish I could stick around, especially for those guys. All of the guys I worked with for years, you guys have been incredible. You guys make fun of me every day. I'm going to miss that. Literally, I make fun of you every single day. It's pretty comfortable. Again, Chief Thomas, thank you. You have been incredible to me, yeah. Every time I'm sick, you're so patient with me, drawing my treatments. I close, Chief Palmer, I know he's here now, I talked to him. He hired me over twenty-one years ago. He gave me a chance, I learned so much from him. Deputy Chief Ross Mansky is here. He was the mayor of Echol one time. Incredible man, I learned so much from him. Always professional. Chief Dempsey, the things you did for me, we came in here, again, going through treatments with you too, and you were so patient with me, always telling me to go home. You guys don't know I'm a little stubborn. I wouldn't listen. Chief Dempsey and Assistant Chief Bowles were so good to me, I'm so grateful. Everyone has been good to me ever since we were here. That's why this is difficult, I just got to take care of my own. Thank you everyone for coming, I appreciate you guys' time, thank you. My wife, so tiny, I go with. You know, we get on Jeopardy with jobs, every officer here knows, you cannot do it alone. You need to help your fellow officers, pastor, friends. I knew your family's been amazing, my father-in-law, my in-laws, or my wife. She's got really mad out of it. She sizzles me off, drawing my treatments. She sits me in my treatment center. Sometimes twelve hours a day, I've had a hundred of them for the last seven years. I wait more to come, and she doesn't complain about anything. It's still all day, she goes to work, comes home, she takes care of the two amazing boys. You know, I'm not here about you, I'm not here about you. That's the thing, yeah.
Thank you, Chief Thomas. I am now asking this Board of Trustees to, for a motion to approve the retirement resignation agreement between Commander Jesse Hernandez and the Village of Lynnwood. Is there a motion? Motion by Dunlap, supported by Clark. Roll call.
Trustee Eves.
Yes.
Trustee Lilly.
Yes.
Trustee Dunlap.
Yes.
Trustee Blakey.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Marshall.
Yes.
That motion carries. I am going to deliver my final remarks from the podium.
I will project. Do you all hear me?
Yes.
Most importantly, you need to hear me, Commander Hernandez. Last time, I get, I feel like the actor with festival, it's just a text, trash, you know, without, you know, like. It's been said, a truly great police officer is hard to find and impossible to forget. Commander Hernandez, Lynnwood will never forget you. This Police Department will never forget you. I will never forget you. You have set an example of bravery and selflessness that will inspire generations of officers to come. Your legacy as a police officer will endure long after your retirement. Your tireless work and dedication as a police officer have made our community a better place. Thank you for your years of service and sacrifice. Your unwavering commitment to protecting and serving our community is a testament to your character and professional ethics. Your desire to protect and serve will never go away, and you will still see things that others will never see, because policing will always be in you. It's going to be challenging to walk away from twenty-one years of camaraderie that very few people in this world get to experience. There will always be days when you long for those times of walking in and hearing them make fun of you. Policing will always be in your heart. Dana? Only a police spouse will understand the toll their job takes on the family. You have been the commander's wife, friend, and mother of his children. You have prayed for his safe return home. You have comforted him through those tough days and then a soft place for him to lay his head. From one retired police wife to another, now is your season to reap the harvest with him. The Village of Lynnwood will not forget the sacrifice that you have made by loaning Commander Hernandez to us for twenty-one years. Commander Hernandez asked one thing of me. He wanted me to make it very clear, and he touched on it a little bit, that this thing is a life choice. He is choosing life, and for that alone, he deserves a round of applause. Commander Hernandez, as you maneuver through your healing journey, it is my prayer that your heart beats softly, your sleep is peaceful, and that you find new joy daily. Please know that you are only leaving active duty, not the Village of Lynnwood. You will always be family to us, and we look forward to popping this experience. Never forget, blessed are the peacemakers, for they shall be called children of God. You and I have had conversations about God's timing, and we both know that it is perfect, and he will continue to care and care for you and love you as you insert his new chapter. Commander Hernandez, will you step forward? Commander Hernandez, put is your badge, my brother. Commander Hernandez, it is my distinct honor to retire my badge, one night you wore. No one will ever wear that badge no more again, and it will be absolutely wrong. Congratulations.
So I survived that without hitting the ugly cry, even though I came very close. Now it is time for us to celebrate these two awesome men in blue. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Motion by Marshall, supported by Clark. Clark, roll call.
Eves.
Yes.
Lilly.
Yes.
Dunlap.
Yes.
Blakey.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
This meeting is officially adjourned. Thank you all.